Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the work session for January fourteenth, twenty twenty. First thing on the agenda is oath of office. The judge will swear me in first and then we'll do Alderman Lyman, Mahan, and Westwood after that.
Repeat after me. I, William Larson.
I, William Larson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
I'll support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Mayor of the City of Red Lodge.
Of Mayor of the City of Red Lodge.
With fidelity so help me God.
With fidelity so help me God. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lyman?
I, Thomas Lyman.
I, Thomas Lyman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as city councilperson.
Of office, of city councilperson.
City of Red Lodge.
City of Red Lodge.
With fidelity so help me God.
With fidelity so help me God. Mr. Westwood?
Absolutely.
Or your right hand.
Ladies, miss, miss man. Dave said I could go next and then he stood up. Go ahead, go ahead.
Who's directing?
I was going with your mayor now. He called the name and I called him. Never again with the judge.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dave, or Dave Westwood.
I, Dave Westwood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as city councilperson.
As, of my office as city councilperson.
City of Red Lodge.
City of Red Lodge.
With fidelity so help me God.
With fidelity so help me God.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Glory Mahan.
I, Glory Mahan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Of my office of city councilperson.
Of my, of city councilperson.
City of Red Lodge.
City of Red Lodge.
With fidelity so help me God.
With fidelity so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Lyman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Next order of business is the Parks Board Annual Report.
Hopefully everybody in the council has their annual report. Anna Drew is here and, did you want to present, Anna?
Sure, can I ask Teresa Whistler, former Parks Board member, to join me?
Oh, sure.
You've got her with you. Kind of been in the chamber a minute. Well, Teresa worked tirelessly on this and although she's no longer on the Parks Board, which is a huge loss to everybody in this room and our tight city, I thought she should come up and help present a little bit about it. I hope you all had an opportunity to look at it and kind of see where our Parks Board has been at this last year and where we'll probably be headed next year with some of the budget cuts that we've experienced. So I think there's one theme that is very evident throughout, which is how many times we say the word volunteers and volunteer and grants and just all the labor that the folks in this community are putting into it. And some of the big things that I think I wanted to draw attention to that we haven't been able to do anything about because of our lack of funding right now. One of them is the trees in Rotary and Finn Park that are a liability to the city. We've tried to make it work where we could have the fungus, we get them taken down for the last couple of years. Couple of years. And I'm sure you all heard about the building situation already, but I felt it would be nice to be able to get those taken down sometime soon. Another kind of loss in terms of urban forestry is for the first time in a long time, we were awarded the D N R C grant, which the urban forestry program pretty much relies on to be able to be sustained. So without it, that was also bringing it to the, to our work.
Cost, the cost, share tree program was canceled because we didn't get the grant this last year.
But we did still manage to maintain our Tree City USA status, which I think twenty years now.
Twenty years.
Twenty years, so that's very exciting and a big deal and a lot of that was thanks to Teresa's tireless work to make sure that we meet the requirements to keep that up.
A lot of volunteer outreach were put in throughout the community to get a citizen kind match.
That's, that's how we got to that two dollars per citizen was through volunteer.
Volunteer.
Yes. And a big shout out, so we've always done little door hanging to let folks know who have conscious trees, you know, like if they need to take care of their trees. And this year we partnered with a high school, which was, is that technically this kind of report? So Rue's not here, but she was able to reach out to the high school so we could have a bunch of high school students use their volunteer time to be able to get that done, which was a huge savings for the city and pretty neat to get young people involved in our local parks. So some of the recreational facility things that we kind of bumped into this year, our moose trails playground has, is older than I have lived in this city old. And it's starting to really show, so Rotary Club took on the task of trying to re-stain the entire play structure this year to try to preserve it a little bit. And I've been to all of those staining parties and we've noticed a lot of parts of the playground that are breaking. I had Mike walk through, who used to be able to do some of the maintenance for us, but we no longer have any money to pay him. And he pointed out some of the places that he thought were really dangerous to young people where things have broken. So I have, I spread his pictures of that and then Neil did a walkthrough and made some marks on the place, I'm sure to show some of the really dangerous broken areas. Now I'd invite all the council and the mayor to walk through moose trails and kind of take notice in those places. I know Neil has them all mapped in his head. Like Taylor is all over here, he moved away, so he wouldn't be able to show you, but there's some pretty, pretty obvious stuff that you should be able to see easily. But Rotary hopes to have at least it all stained by next summer. We almost got them, the only part we really have left are the swings and then the tots section is not completely redone. So we were thankful to Public Works Department too for helping us find all the staining materials that we needed. And then Neil from city staff attended every single one of those staining days as well to make sure we had everything we need, so that was really cool. The skate park, again, a ton of volunteer labor to try to keep that safe and accessible for the community. Big shout out to Brian Romaine, who's on the Parks Board. He organized the volunteer work to redo a guard rail. And then we have some exciting stuff in the works, hopefully to try to do a little bit more for the skate park moving forward. Kevin Bonk, also of Parks Board, has worked tirelessly on that. Another highlight is our pickleball team here has grown tremendously and they've done some volunteer labor to paint pickleball court lines. Shout out to Catherine Eklund and the Vertuec Electric for getting LED lights installed by the ice rink, which is great.
Yeah, we, we didn't mention this report, the work that was done to paint the skate park because it was after, technically after this year-end report, this is the July.
That, so it's suitably, so it's through the end of June.
Right, right, so the, the skating, skate park painting happened through July and that was thanks to Janice Colson and the work that she did through the DEQ. Had an art program, kids can, and they did a great job with the skate park with those paintings.
And another great Parks cleanup, big shout out to Rob Weimar, our council rep on the Parks Board for like bringing a bunch of tires out this year, was that this year?
Brian did all that.
Brian and Rob, I saw pictures of you with tires. Don't be bashful.
They were too big for me to pick up.
Were you directing? Let's hold for the picture. They did a great job, it was another good Parks cleanup. I think there were over thirty people that showed up to clean all of our city parks. Big shout out to Rue who plans, helps to plan that every single year. Another successful, Earth Day Block Party, Catherine's last, but I know there are more to come.
Robin does have a plan this year, I think.
She does.
Yes, which is awesome. Is there anything else that you want to touch on before we get to challenges in future of this? Well, I mean, obviously our parks budget has shrunk again this year, so you guys can kind of get a quick overview of the stuff that we noticed that is the biggest of big issues. Obviously, one that probably sits for the person for most in your mind is that we don't have a city pool at this time. So I know you all are working on that. We'd like to offer our help anytime that's helpful or requested or needed and we're always, we've been working on the cool thing for a couple of years, knowing that this was coming, so we have some ideas, we're always welcome to share. Including a proposal for our Parks and recreational district, so we have all the materials on that. If it's something that you'd never like to consider again or maybe you would look at. Another big issue we have is we did a lot of work on the Lions Park gazebo. However, it's not completed, so if we don't get that all finished up, sometimes if we don't do something all the way, then it just starts to break again. So it's something to keep on your radar that I don't know will have the funding fixed this year without maybe hopefully maybe trying for a grant at the community foundation or something like that. Our coal miners park grant went away again, so a lot of fundraising around trying to create soccer field, Beth Graham and Kevin Bonk and James worked really hard on that and then it kind of just evaporated.
Soil costs were triple the initial estimate.
Yeah, so that's a hopeful thing that I think probably will happen. And PRCA is awesome. And they have, they got us another grant too, which isn't in the cycle, but they'll be presenting to Parks Board possibly tomorrow night or next month about another grant they got to continue to build out trail systems.
And, and so I guess the bottom line is that this, the only budget that remains is what was carried over from the L R, R L E C F, I should head that down right now. R L E C F grant for down, that next it.
For downtown trees.
Yeah, so any questions we can answer or?
Teresa, I know you're on the reserve tax board.
No.
No, you're not?
Sustainability only.
Oh, okay. Is there anybody from the Parks Board on the reserve tax board or anybody lobbying the reserve tax board to get park maintenance on there?
It sounded very promising. I attended the other night and it sounds like, you know, we're included in that big bucket and it's worded and it sounds good.
And Laura's been to those meetings too, like this, I think you can add to that.
To me, it was positive that the resident feedback was so positive for the parks. And one of the things I like about that is if we can get it, get it up to the that's a percentage or a part of that, then it's not an ongoing.
Yeah.
Ongoing battle. I need it.
That'd be good.
I have a question for you guys.
That sounds even more promising because, you know, it's, it's that I know they'll make their recommendations to the council and then you will all discuss and you'll take more input, I imagine, from the community. But it would be nice to see a percentage held as a, as a minimum for parks maintenance. That's the only thing that we would ever have ongoing to, to keep up with the parks if, if there's no other. And, you know, we understand, nobody wants other districts, but it would be good to have that worded in the reserve.
It's been haunting me lately that the coal miners park, if we wouldn't have gotten involved in that, they were gonna, the DEQ needed to come in and cap that because there's coal showing in places along the back.
And we still can't.
And we came in at a later date after they got it capped, because they didn't even cap it saying it's too expensive and with all the addition. So just let it get done and then come in afterwards and do what we want to do.
Rob, there's nothing that keeps them from coming in to do.
They said it was too expensive.
Well, without the extra soil, they'd come in and cap it to their standard.
And we, we got, we pulled this up early and a few months with James and myself and the soccer people and they're working that in with DEQ to see what else can be done. So like they, Teresa was saying, yes, excuse me, at any time that they can come in and put the cap on.
I think when I heard Rob express and then maybe it countered was that ultimately it's not gonna not get capped because we tried to do something more. Was that somewhere, is that, oh, they would have done the first layer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's news to me.
No, they weren't even gonna do it?
No, they, they looked at it and they saw some issues with it. They didn't feel it was toxic and had to be capped. If they, if they studied it and felt like that coal slab was definitely getting in the rock creek, they probably would put a thin layer of cap on it. But they really didn't deem that a major issue. If they did, they would put at least a minimal cap on it.
And they have to regardless of that cost.
And if I may add one other thing, speaking of volunteers, Kate Bolin at the high school has used her ad students at a couple of different points in time to assess weeds at coal miners park. And Jim's done a great job with the contractors on weed spraying and we've done a good job of weeds in our parks, especially coal miners, because it was in very bad shape about four, five years ago and all the parks were, looked dramatically better. And some of that's been GIS by the high school.
I had one question that I hadn't dialed into until you, you know, you skip right over the really big stuff at the top in the large fonts and that that was, that this report was through the end of June last year. And if you throw in things like the trees at Finn Park, which I agree are significant concern and liability, part of me is wishing we could have had this discussion prior to budget. And that doesn't mean it was completely out of mind, but we'd have certainly been more blaring it in our face. So what can we do to help make sure that, how can, can we get this sooner in the year and closer to our budgetary cycle, or is that not fair?
It's been there minutes for years.
Yeah. We talk about it all the time.
Especially the less given the budget.
Because I looked at it a lot and I thought it seems.
We presented a very, very, very detailed budget this year to all of you, like we went, we spent a lot more time on it, so you guys would get a better. Because I know when I was on council, the budget was fairly like broad, so it was hard for me to really understand the costs associated with parks. So we spent a lot of time really brushing out those costs and one of the specific items that we put was this problem. So I don't know if you all received that, because there was some.
We, we did, I said, there was a lot of this when I was going through this, when we've seen this, we've heard this before or something, but there was, there was parts of it and maybe it's because it's post-budget, at this point, I'm like, oh, that's a big one, we should have been able to do something about it.
So you know what, you're right, because I know that sitting on the Parks Board, I've been frustrated that we come to the city council meetings and it was just, oh, we met with all the department heads and blah, blah, blah. And then we're sitting there going, well, nobody's talked to us about our, you know, parks budget. We don't have a representation of a department head that is close to the issues that we track and that we put on our task list. So maybe the next time there's a budget discussion, we can have someone actually come become more familiar with, or we could get a report to the city council or the Parks Board could give a report at that time firsthand to the city council about what we need to do.
Maybe that would be my ask is if we could get you in front, because I, in fairness, we've got Rob and you've got James, I'm assuming you guys are working with James, that's who I've.
We were with Neil.
Yeah.
There's kind of a transition and so maybe that, it's not that it's an issue, it's that maybe there's been, you know, a little bit of a gap in, in some of the discussions.
Pushes harder this time around.
Yeah.
Well, we also know that right when you're doing your budget too, there's so many different folks that are coming to present to you. Like we tried to get our agenda a couple of times and you all were just very busy and so Parks Board just kept kind of getting pushed back, which is, I get it, you guys are very busy, but that makes it hard too.
You don't write your agenda.
Right, well, I just, that makes it harder for us to be able to, because we don't want to be a nuisance, but we want to be able to provide information, which is why we worked really hard on like a detailed document for you all this time so that there wasn't more time you're meeting necessarily, we kind of had an idea of why we were so stressed.
So the second question that I had was in relation to the grant that you didn't get this year. Is there anything, was that just because sometimes you get grants and sometimes you don't, was it something the city could have done?
They've become much more competitive. Five years ago, we used to get, well, from, I think the beginning of about eight years or so, I've seen there, I forget exactly how many, but the first three to four years, they were awarding us seventy-five hundred dollars a year, which at the time was ten percent of the grant money. So in other words, there weren't many communities applying. Now there's at least twice as many towns applying and the grants have gotten smaller where the grant award total budget has gone on, I think, five thousand, I think it's gone from seventy-five thousand to eighty thousand and they've got at least twice as many cities applying. So a lot of it is just competition that's gotten stronger.
And DNRC actually started hosting their own conference and there were a number of communities there. So I think due to their success, there's so many more communities competing for the same grant.
It, it seemed like the trees in Finn Park, it seemed like that was gonna happen. Wasn't it in, within the budget? I just wanted to be around and collect some of that firewood is what I, as I was listening.
The DNRC grant that we did not, yeah, that was in part, well, that was gonna help Kate.
That was the project proposal. And that's all kind of fleshed out, Teresa did a nice job of kind of explaining how that whole process.
By the way, that wind that blew through here about three or four weeks ago, that, that knocked anything loose down?
Not yet.
It did knock a branch off of a honey locust at Pride Park.
It knocked Mike real.
Let's let Mary talk, please.
Thank you. Would this work that, that's required, especially at Finn Park, but with trees all over town, I know there's one at my house that is giving the cut down a lot by Pride Park. Would they qualify as a capital improvements project that we could make a priority? Because it doesn't improve the land.
That's how a fight in your lifetime.
How about removing them?
If there isn't a separate Parks budget, it would have to come out of public works somehow.
We also understand that you all have a lot of financial constraints. Like we have frustrations, but we also know it's not like there's an easy solution or some money sitting someplace that is hidden. We, so that is a frustration, but it's not a blame, I want to just be clear, I know that you have lots on your plate.
The sooner we get resort tax passed and.
And in the meantime, just something for you guys to keep on your radar of where we have like real safety concerns, like moose trails and those trees, I think, are like the two things that we really identified as real concerns in the long. The more I walked through moose trails, the more I was like, this is probably bad. So just something to know. I think you have volunteers there, maybe you can help us.
Any other questions for the Parks Board? Thank you guys.
Thank you. Kevin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
About the skate park?
That'll be coming up next, Kevin. So we'll go ahead and move on to Resolution three, five, three, six, skate park site support for discussion. Kevin?
I, I know that we have a lot of, a lot of things on the, on the, for the skate, for the Parks Board that are priorities and I know that was, used to as one of them, but as, when we closed the pool, expected maybe some greater support to have it rebuilt more quickly. And I think that's probably gonna happen eventually and I appreciate all that you've done for, for that. But as I, I kind of walked away from that and I was pretty involved in the soccer field project with DEQ and that brand and soccer. And they pulled the funding for that. I, I, one of my pet peeves being on the, on the Parks Board is every month we talk about the skate park, because it's the most heavily used park in town. And so I got to investigate this thing and how it started and where the skate park came from and how it evolved into what it is today. And so I got this idea, and that was probably not too smart, but I got this idea that if I can find out how we can fix this thing without going back every spring and working on this wood, these wooden structures, that it's, it's not a good thing to have in Montana. I found out who originally started the skate park. And that was back in eighty-three and his name's Aaron Cairo and he's from Red Lodge. Well, Aaron's now a professional skateboarder, does his own skate, skate company in Northern California. And I sent him an email and I asked him, I said, you know, what do you think? And he, he, he said, he would like to build a concrete skate park here. I said, okay, that's great, do you have any money? No, but he's a YouTuber and he has four point four million subscribers on his YouTube channel. He said, well, if I get a dollar from each person, that's great, but that's not probably the way it's gonna work. So I, I get looking this a little further and right now, the skate park construction thing is a wave that's kind of come off the west coast. Where they built, they have built a lot of skate parks and it's roll, it's kind of rolling through the Rockies and Montana right now. And so I got ahold of Montana Skate Park Association, which is in Missoula, and those guys are very committed to building skate parks and finding grant money to build skate parks through Montana. And they can raise a lot of money primarily through a gentleman by the name of Jeff Amen, who owns, who is a bass player from Pearl Jam Rock Band, so he's got, he's got some money. And his, his intent is to build skate parks all over the state. So it looks like after talking to them, they really, really want to build a skate park in my, in, in Red Lodge. They said, you guys, we're gonna put you on the top of the list. Okay, that's great. So between those guys in Missoula and Aaron Cairo in, in the Bay Area, I'm hoping that we should be able to raise enough money to build a skate park. We're gonna have to rebrand it, we started a new board, we want to put up a new website. We're gonna, last night we had a meeting, I, I think I have a handful of really, really good people that are really committed to doing this thing, because all their kids skate. I don't have, my kids are grown up, but now I'm not allowed to skate, somebody told me I can't anyway, but those people want to really, really go for some of this funding. There's Tony Hawk Foundation, Aaron Cairo has his own foundation, it's the First Try Foundation, and then working through Montana Skate Park Association, they have foundations. One's called Montana Pool Service, they don't build pools, but that's Jeff Amen's foundation and he, he's funding those guys. And so they want to do this thing, but we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to raise some funds here in town. And we don't want, we'd like to not have the city throw into any money if we can do that. We know that, because we're strapped, so we're trying to get outside funding or individual private funding to do this thing. It's gonna be a lot of work, we estimate about two hundred thousand dollars. We know who can build the park, they've come to Red Lodge and they've talked to Parks Board members. It's a company that was, that's been so busy building parks in Montana, they were from Portland, they, they moved to Stevensville. And so they came down from Stevensville, they want to do the thing, they're very, very good at what they do, they're reputable worldwide, we're really lucky to have them here and they really would like to do it. So at this point, we're still trying to get organized to make sure that we can get this thing, we'd like to, the name would be, they want, we decided last night that we're gonna, we would like to rename it to Hellboy Skate Park. And that, you know, and then we're trying to get a logo together and we're gonna have, and I'm gonna be working with the schools to try to get kids involved in the thing, but I think we can do it. It's gonna take a while, we'll have to remove the slab and all, everything that's there and it'll be all, it'll be completely concrete.
So what Kevin is asking is Resolution three, five, three, six, just a letter of support from council and the city.
We will need to use a court and project.
Questions at the table? Dave?
Just a couple of suggestions, I mean, one of them is in the second, whereas since skateboarders do not have an appropriate skate park, that to me is just kind of some subjective. subjective language. I bet we can find something more concrete that we can use in the after. And then I think the other question I had is, you know, what is the ask from the city? And, and this addresses the ownership, operation, and liability to kind of be determined in the future as part of that design process, and I'm okay with that.
Okay, well, when I wrote that, yeah, I was, check, want to change that to say that if we're, we want to get, be eligible for any grant, any grant money for the skate park, the city's gonna have to hold the liability, just like it does now.
Okay, so to be eligible for grants, we already know that the city is gonna need to hold the liability.
Yes.
Which we are ready to do.
Yes, because it's City Park already.
Mary?
I just have a question for you, Mr. Mayor. Why is this not on the seven o'clock meeting agenda for action?
Because that place is here. And if you want to carry it on for action, I'd be more than happy to carry it forward.
Yeah, I do that until we do, what we do next month.
Okay. Uh, we talked about it, and it was, we thought this was a good place to explain it, and then we're in a huge rush so that we put it on the next agenda. Mike?
If we improve this all concrete, does the city attorney have any reservations about changing liability, city? I mean, you, I guess you'd think it would be safer, concrete instead of wood, just to your ratings going forward.
I can tell you this, Livingston, I believe it's Livingston right now, is building one through Jeff, how do you say his last name?
Jeff Ament.
Ament.
And they, they went through Montana Skate Park Association.
Yeah, and actually, back in August, I had contacted him about skate parks. I think that's when a lot of chatter got started about the kids not having that, the pool getting shut down. I, what he explained to me is there are two communities. Now, I think he kind of takes on two projects a year. There are two communities. He said, one of them was not gonna be able to raise the money. And I said, well, could you put us there if that happens? And he didn't answer me on that. But he was, what he said to me in an email is that it looked like it was about, that we would have to come up with maybe a minimum of seventy-five thousand. He said it's about a hundred and fifty thousand to build a five to six thousand square foot skate park.
Yeah.
And that the fundraising would, uh, we'd have to have it like through June the first of the next year. He was very positive about it, and he's built skate parks all over Montana. It's all concrete.
You lost me. Are those numbers to do with the liability?
No, this is to build one. I'm just explaining what, what I had gotten to. The liability part of it, Billings has them, Livingston has them, all these places have them. They are usually a city-funded part. What we would need to do is just make sure the liability insurance passes through them. It would be different than any, probably a lot of the other liabilities. It's probably a little riskier, but so is swimming. You can drown. You can, you know, get a broken bone or get
I think our liability, excuse me, I think our liability is greater now of what we have.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think that was, that was Mike's point. I guess as we bring this forward for action next time, can you come with feedback if there's a change in that exposure or the cost of insuring against it, if it's concrete versus existing deteriorating wood structure?
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, I just wanted to say, because I haven't met you, but I had, had tried to see if there's something to be done, because it bothered, you know, so many people about the pool. So I'd love to help y'all out any way I can. Contact with him and I didn't get to talk.
Yeah, I was Jeff Ament, feeling pretty good.
Oh, thank you. I, all I did was just got on Pearl Jam's, and it went through them, and then he contacted me, so.
Yeah, I was redirected to the Skate Park Association, and those guys in Missoula are very, very dedicated to little parks.
They're really
And I went, actually went out there last week and spoke to one of them, he, we're gonna do this thing, and we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that, like, this part.
Why, tell me, I said, you know, that it's a generous town, very community-oriented town, that would, I didn't, I didn't think it would be hard for the ci- the citizens of the town to come up with about matching money.
See, we have a lot of stuff to people.
This is true, but I think if I understood right, he, whatever we come up with, he matches it up to one hundred and fifty thousand.
Montana Skate Park Association, I don't know if the, I think they'll do one-on-one, one-on-one match through him. They have to apply for the grant to, to hand it to him. And then they, they just waste money, because they're working at us and Superior and one other small town right now. Jeff Ament's main goal is to build parks on, on reservations. And, and he's doing that, and there's a lot of them. One, one in Hayes, and they just finished one at Third Point. Last summer, they had finished Livingston. It's a beautiful, beautiful little skate park. Kids shoveled off all of it, and that's how it is, so. They, they're, the, the company that they use is called Evergreen Skate Park, and those guys have been highly driven, and I, I fully trust their judgment on what they're gonna do. They did a, that little preliminary, just a, that little drawing, just the goodst idea of what, what, what they can make it look like. And once we get going on this thing, we're gonna have a better idea of what it's gonna, what it's gonna be. But they're, they're very good at keeping, at, at, uh, knowing who's gonna be using the park and not just making it for advanced skaters. They're, they're really great at building parks that little kids can use, as well as adults.
Is the current location big enough for what he does?
The current location is perfect. And Aaron Cairo would like to see it there as well, because he, that's where he started with it, and he's, you know, I would like to do it there. So I think it's, I think it's a perfect location if we can do it there.
The only downside would be that it would be out for a season though, they did it.
Uh, half a season, maybe. Depends on how fast they can move on it. And it depends on the timing. We start in October, I don't know.
One of the things he said was that, one of the, the town that he didn't think was gonna come, be able to come up with the money, he said they would not, he didn't think they would be able to have enough by June one of next year, meaning of twenty-twenty. So maybe if they don't come up with it.
Right.
Maybe Red Lodge can come up with it to, to the citizens.
That's what we're hoping, and that's what we're gonna try to do.
But I will look at the liability, um, just to pass it
So is he kind of willing to take this forward to next council meeting and, you know, as a resolution, after changing that whereas?
I have a question. You answered it. It's the city's responsibility currently. I just wanted to know if the city attorney thought maybe she had something to add, or it's all a red flag, but doesn't seem to be anything there.
Good for her.
Yeah.
Rob, did you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna mention, at one of the meetings, you gave us a website where you could go actually see these on the internet and here on Cairo, and people noted, pretty incredible. And Sam McCollack is way into, um, the same thing on with a bicycle, and he's excited. He heard about this skate park and
Yeah, I've met with him. He's, he's come to, from the meetings.
And we could get together, there's a Parks Board meeting tomorrow, and draw whatever to the next meeting. Is that what you're hoping for?
Yeah, just changing that resolution, whereas that Dave was concerned about.
I, I think this is, this is the primary, minor as.
Okay.
So it's already going, okay.
Carry that forward to the next council meeting. Thank you, Kevin. Resolution three-five-three-five, restricted account for victims' advocate services discussion. Judge, do you wanna just start us out on that?
Sure. Okay, counsel, I did. I know you have some questions to ask me, something about what we, the proposal was in this. Do you have any questions now, but hopefully that may be a
Hi, Duke.
Ms. Cameron.
Yeah, Esther. Um, so this resolution as for us is totally different than the one that came before us, I remember. So has the interlocal agreement come to the city yet from the county? Will it be Marcy's plan?
Uh, we've been kicking that back and forth, and
The last that they explained to me is they, I think the lady that handles the communications back and forth said, maybe they will, uh, with what Alex and I had a agreement on as far as the wording and all.
They were gonna take it in front of the county commissioners, though.
And that's, that was what she said.
They must have signed off on it with what we're about. She doesn't really have to change.
Because pretty much the language was kind of consistent where, because the wording that Alex and I agreed, it would just continue to go forward.
So we don't have any interlocal agreement yet?
They just kind of carried forward, so we, in Missoula, we have
We, yeah, there's supposed to be one in January.
Right.
What Alex and I looked at and read is agree that it, it perpetually continued until the grant ended. I think Tessa may have wanted the, some of the language changes a little bit because of the grant and everything, but we agree. Alex and I are pretty much on the same page that, and I think the commissioners may just want to clean up some language. But we are still, Alex and I agree the contract is still in debate.
So, but it does say in here that you're anticipating renewing, but we have not renewed that, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And, and just for clarification, like, what I heard is the contract is still in effect on agreement, a mutual agreement of the parties in practice?
It's actually in effect because there's no time ending in it. It said about the grant, and at first there was speculation that the county wasn't gonna get the grant because this was in that, what was the name of that one?
Marcy's
Marcy's law thing. And then Tessa worked hard, got a grant, reapproved, and then so this is just going forward. By the language of it, Alex and I both agreed that it would just continue for years until, and if a grant was not available for Tessa, then the council would have to look at, does the council want to put in the money to keep that situ- that office going? So, and that would be a larger amount of money if the grant money wasn't there.
I would just want to get that clarification, I was, sorry, you'll back to me.
In the law that is, that referred to in the resolution, the forty-six dash eighteen dash two thirty-six?
Yes.
Says that this is temporary, and then
It changes in two thousand twenty-one.
Correct.
The only, um, of that statute, the only language, because it, in the, um, copy I provided to you, the only actual change is under line seven C. That is what changed between the two, um,
Seven C.
So on page three of that same ordinance, or statute, and then, um, right before, it says effective January first, twenty twenty-one, or, excuse me, July first, between the two ordinances, the, what was passed, it will be implemented on July first, twenty twenty-one. The only change in the language is under seven C, which is if the city in town or county does not operate a victim services, there is no victim services like DSBS available in the county, then it's to go, or, currently to, um, can be deposited with the Department of Justice, and then it changes, will be sent to this, um, account according to Title fifty-three, chapter nine, part one. That's, that's the only change.
I, I, yeah, I have it right here. And what it says is that if we don't use a nonprofit private agency like DSBS, then it'll go to the Department of Justice and to the State's General Fund to be used for a statewide program for victims.
And so right now, we have Tessa, who does, or with the county, and we have DSBS. So line C does not even apply and neither matter. I doubt DSBS is in any condition of folding and no longer being with us. They have been with us, or in the county, city for over twenty years, and I'm hoping for much more than that to come.
But this resolution doesn't use DSBS money. It doesn't have the city using DSBS. It has the city using solely the, the county's program, which is scheduled to disappear in twenty twenty-one, because it will, then they'll have the statewide victim advocacy program. My concern is that we're taking local money, surcharges and fees from people that have committed crimes. Well, oh, you're right, it's not fees, it's, it's, um, surcharges, fifty dollars. And in twenty twenty-one, July one of twenty twenty-one, it'll go into a statewide pot instead of, to help victims locally.
So this is just my proposed ordinance that I wrote up. If you want to change it, you are the council. This is what you do.
We ask questions.
Yeah. Any language you want to add or change or put in there, I have no problem with it. This is just to help you in that whole process and help you understand where, how we can save the city money along.
Well, my concern is that this is not only on for discussion tonight, it is on for action. And so I think that it really deserves a lot more discussion than at this meeting, because there, there, this, this includes some real major changes.
No, it does not. It would be creating a special, or restricted account that should only be paid to, to be in compliance with the state law. Currently, up until, um, this became aware, the full fifty dollars of that surcharge was being sent to DSBS. Per the statute itself, the court is to retain one dollar of that from each of those fifty-dollar surcharges. That was never retained, because, by the way, that was what this handsome was told, that it just, all of it, there was no, or discerning between the two line lines of the statute. And in order to
Is that addressed in here?
Yes, in my letter, I, I addressed
Is your letter? Is it in the resolution?
Yes.
I didn't find it.
Whereas MCA forty-six eighteen, it's about the sixth or seventh down, uh, three?
It's number seven.
Number seven. Um, two thirty-six, seven eight, allows the city to retain surcharges under collected under part C of that same statute, and distributed surcharge for payment of expenses, um, excuse me, retained by the city. I know I did put it in there, but one dollar is to be retained by the city if you refer back to the statute that's under part seven D.
Which, could you help me understand which of these wherashes is that? I don't see it.
It's, it's, it's number seven.
Number seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Allows for the city to retain part surcharges.
The, the concern is, and, and the judge is correct that it's mentioned in the wherashes, um, the councilman Cameron is correct in that it isn't in the therefore, so it doesn't do anything. Um, my two cents, and I, I, I'm just looking at the clock, so I wouldn't tell, I'm sure, and then some.
So, um,
Go ahead.
You know, your issue with the, um, one dollar not being in the therefore, it is being retained and rolled back into the court budget now, correct? Because that's what the statute says. If you want to change that and go against state statute, that's your problem.
I'm just asking questions, Your Honor. I'm not, it's just really unclear in this. I understand that a dollar per one of those surcharges goes back to the city and goes back to the court to cover the costs of, of that. But just because we ask questions doesn't mean that, that we're against what you're trying to do. It just means that we need some clarification, because we have a very important decision to make. And nowhere in here does it say that any money is going to DSBS. No, nowhere in here.
As I said, this is, I, this is the proposed resolution. It is yours to change, modify how you see fit. If you, in my letter, I addressed that. If you want to send it here or send it there, that is up to you. This is just a proposal for what I spoke with the mayor and came up with, to save the city four thousand dollars a year that can be used in other areas.
I'm just, I just, it's, it's my opinion that saving the city four thousand dollars is very short sighted. When we think in twenty twenty-one, or, yeah, twenty twenty-one, July one of twenty twenty-one, those, that four thousand dollars is then going to go to the State's General Fund instead of to local victims of domestic violence here in Red Lodge, in the city of Red Lodge.
It's not just domestic violence. We have dog bites, owners that have their dogs attacked here in town, assault victims. We have property damage. It, though, that's all of what Tessa does. DSBS has a very, very, they don't cover the full spectrum that Tessa does. She comes to court, she participates in the hearings. I get recommendations from her from what, in a sentencing, if there's restitution, she coordinates with the victim, she works with the prosecutor, she works with the victims, gets them here at court if they need to be. She does all of these things.
And I'm good with that. And, but what you're saying is we're gonna save four thousand dollars by not making these pass-through payments to DSBS. And I'm good with that, and, but what you're saying is we're going to save four thousand dollars by not making these pass-through payments to DSBS, and instead, we're going to make those pass-through payments to the victim advocacy program through the county, which potentially could go away July one, twenty twenty-one. And that money will go to the State General Fund, that's what the law reads.
Number three, under, or sorry, excuse me, Part C, it says if one A or B does not, or is not there, so no local, city government will run, or county government-run organization, or private nonprofit, then it goes to this, that's where it goes, to the third option, the other two are first.
Dave. I'm in a, in a, in agreement that this isn't quite ready for prime time, I'd like to make a couple of, what I hope are constructive suggestions on how I think we can move forward. First, I want to thank the judge for your letter, I thought it was extremely well articulated, and it was in line with the conversations that I've had. I've talked to Lonnie, the conversations that I've heard at the table, and what I heard is in line with what? Actually, the title of this resolution is, which is provider agnostic. There's two different objectives to be accomplished. The first one that I understand is that we need to set up a restricted account to hold this money in. And I think that what we should do when we come back next month is we should come back with a version that is provider agnostic and just says that we will set up that account, I think we need to do that. There were several of the wherases that I thought didn't apply in, in either version of it. There were some concerns that the judge raised about being referenced in the recommendations, and I noticed his still had a, had a similar call. But I said, I, I would like to see us take the first step of setting up just an account with that restricted account, and I think that can be done significantly shorter and cleaner. And then the second resolution would be, at the time that we take that money out, we make a decision whether we want to send that to DSBS, whether we want to send that to the county. And then we could take from the judge's letter, the comment says, basically says, the money is there, it's available, this meets the requirements as set forth by state statute, and therefore, we move to take that money out of there. So that would be my recommendation, how we could move forward and get this done and get that account set up. Thoughts?
Does it take till the next meeting, or could it just be done now?
Is there an urgency?
Well, that's so, and I'll, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask the judge the question that I asked him earlier in private, but I'll ask it again towards here, and that is, is there an urgency or a problem if we push this? If we come back with a, with a cleaner version and do this next month, does that still work?
Yes, the statute is, and there is no case law, so it's very silent about when these payments have to be done. I think for accounting purposes, once a year at minimum. The court does its reconciliation every month because that's what is required for the accounting portion, and that sends that to the city. And so right now, there's a, some setting there waiting to be distributed as you choose. So there's not really a rush, I mean, it's been almost a year since this was first discussed, and so we just, you know, I think we have enough time to continue moving forward with this. If it takes another month, if it takes another two months, hopefully, action can be taken and something can be decided before the end of the fiscal year.
So I, I guess my recommendation is, is like I said, A is that we take that month, but then also we simplify the task by kind of bifurcating and just setting up an account. And I'm kind of curious what people's thoughts are on that.
So what Dave's saying is that he wants a resolution creating the restricted fund account.
Yeah, and, and provider agnostic. And.
Thoughts on that?
If we're setting up a restricted account, which I totally agree with, a restricted account for one C, do, should we set up a restricted account for one A and one B?
I defer to Lonnie if one account would serve, my understanding is that one account would serve for all three, and what happens is right now, we have a contract with the court, or the county, rather, and so we would pay first four thousand to them, and if there was anything collected and extended that, there's nothing that would require us, that would prohibit us from using that account to send to DSBS or others?
And I'm pretty sure that whereas at the very bottom of the page addresses that, that if. Pass-through payment, whereas, you know, equal or see the annual monthly payment, see.
That specifies one C, though, I mean, should we be setting up three accounts?
Three accounts for one.
Fifteen dollar mystery surcharge, that gets rolled just into the City General Fund, doesn't it?
Yes. What's the third one? What would be the third?
B, A and B and C.
We do not deal with B because we do not deal with felonies.
Okay.
So it would be just, just the one that deals with.
Under one C, that one line item, because it is by statute directed in a specific location. And there's no case law or anything that says when those have to be paid out, so this is, you know, can take, we can take some time if, I have a discussion about this. And my door is always open to you if you want to discuss this, I have, I will make time through, you have my contact information, I will come in if it's at a time of need for all y'all, if you have any questions.
Mayor.
The council alloc, allocated the pass-through payments, which are these surcharges, through six thirty, twenty twenty, and they were allocated to DSBS. Are those payments being made?
They're not allocated to DSBS, just because it says DSBS, we don't have a contract with DSBS, and when he asks for us to hold those funds, they've been held, they have been paid though, to pre-.
Yes, sir.
Though, the council was under the impression, when we approved the budget, that pass-through funds for victim advocacy for domestic violence was going to DSBS. It even states it right on the budget, there was never anything that said, but this might not happen. We allocated four thousand dollars from the police budget for the Marcy's law, correct? So those are two different things.
Alex, you're acting like these are funds that belong to the city, they're not general funds.
I'm not saying.
You have no control, yeah, you said, we allocate it.
We didn't.
We allocated these funds, no you didn't, we could put fifty million dollars in that line item, it's arbitrary, it's there to, as a place order to keep the books down. It, it doesn't matter what that number is, it's there just to keep the court's budget from not exploding when, and being in the, with thousands of dollars. And so these, the surcharges themselves are not actual funds of the city, they are earmarked by the state and by statute to go to different places. And in order for those funds to be distributed, and a line item had to be created to keep the, the books down, so it didn't have a very wide side of showing that all of these, the city, or the court had all of these expenses when they are actually not expenses.
So those funds, that fifty dollars minus a dollar that goes back to the court, are restricted to a victim advocacy nonprofit.
Or.
Private organization or one.
Run by a government.
One run by a government. So when this, this council approved the budget, they approved the pass, it was our understanding that we were approving those court surcharges to be passed on to DSBS, which is appropriate according to Montana Code Annotated. And we were appropriating four thousand dollars of general fund money to go to the county for the county's victim advocacy program. Is that correct? Do I, did I say that correctly? That that's what, that's what, that was our understanding?
Yeah, and I'm remembering.
Because the four thousand dollars specifically said Marcy's law.
Which I think doesn't exist in the Constitution.
Well, it's, it existed ten minutes ago for, for the city attorney to refer to it.
No, I said that was what it was starting under, and that's what Tessa's grant money started under because Montana passed a law, the Montana Supreme Court said it was unconstitutional. So most, most counties have maintained the victim advocacy programs because they are very valuable, it takes a lot of time on law enforcement, prosecutors and all, and they do a valuable service to the community. And so that was continued when Marcy's law was declared unconstitutional. I just referred to that because that's what's set in stage, I didn't say that this was under Marcy's law.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, I'm not finished. What I'm saying is, the county kept it up, Tessa gets grants through the state and federal, she has to do all this work and show what she does working with the county and county victims and what she does working for the city, how much time she aligns to everything, and she spends hours getting her grant done. So she got this grant under whatever umbrella, I don't know exactly who it was, through the county, she got her grant approved again. So it's not a Marcy's law because that's unconstitutional, and she's just moving forward, continuing to do what she does so well.
Okay, so it's, it is time for a council meeting, this is also on the agenda for city council, so we'll bring it up there. You're welcome to postpone it or whatever you want, or whatever action you want to do at that time. So.